I'll call this Bloomington City Council Utilities Committee meeting to order. We have two items this evening. The first is ordinance 2026. An ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction and installation by the city of Bloomington. I just been preempted by your dis-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're one ahead of me. Let me see if I can escape this so I can finish reading. Okay. An ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction and installation by the city of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city sewer works utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof and the collection segregation and distribution of the revenues of such sewer works and other related matters. And then our second item is ordinance 2027 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater. And both presenters are the city of Bloomington Utilities Director Vic Kelson. Vic, would you like to begin your presentation of ordinance 2026?
Yes, thank you for having us tonight for this committee meeting. Ordinance 2026 is the bonding that is required for us to make major improvements to sewer treatment and stormwater infrastructure at the utilities department. I have with me Laura Pettit and Brad Hall, both of the utilities department finance and engineering divisions respectively. Also, we have Buzz Crone and his, his crew who were, have been working on the bonding. So I'm only going to give a short background presentation and then I'm going to turn it over to Buzz to, to do the rest. Essentially, we wish to sell bonds totaling $30.4 million to pay two major capital projects. The first one is modernization and capacity improvements at the Dillon Road wastewater treatment plant. The other is to pay for replacement of major storm sewer infrastructure that goes through downtown Bloomington. In 2016, first of all, the sewer works portion of it. In 2016, I D M warned C V U that the Dillon plant had been in exceedance of 90% of its maximum design flow rate of 15 million gallons per day for three consecutive years. They directed us to begin planning for capacity improvements at the plant. Since then, we've been working with I D M and our contractor engineers to develop a plan to modernize electrical systems, control systems, our blowers and blower motors and to also install additional filters plus some other smaller portions of the project at the Dillon plant. It's the first phase of raising our capacity from 15 to 20 million gallons per day. The second phase will be improvements to the digestors. Overall, the project will cost around $23 million. So far, the work that's been done has been paid from cash on hand. The bond proceeds and additional revenues that we receive as we go along will pay for the remainder. This project will not affect rates in any way because council authorized the rate increase, including the funds for this project back in 2019. On the stormwater utility, we'll be replacing the middle section of the drainage tunnel that carries the Jordan River through downtown. The other, the upstream portion up near People's Park and the downstream part portion that goes down to where the stream daylights again were done 15 or 20 years ago. The tunnel itself is around 100 years old. It's in a pretty badly degraded condition. It's undersized also for the amount of storm flow we now receive during major rain events. When that tunnel was built, there was not nearly as much impervious surface because as, as there is today in the middle of town and on campus. So we get larger flows. Also, is the, with climate change, we're anticipating we'll get larger flows even still from time to time in the future. The roof of the tunnel was judged to be structurally unsound in late 2016. And we did an emergency replacement or actually an emergency repair of the roof under the Third and Lincoln intersection a few years ago. Altogether, this project will cost around $11 million. It is presently out for bid and we hope to get started in the first quarter of 2021. Similarly, as with the sewer project, the council approved an increase in the stormwater fee to fund this project in 2018. So there will be no further increase in the fee associated with this project. If you have one more thing that, just to clarify, financially, the sewer works are considered part of, sorry, the stormwater utility is considered part of the sewer works. So that's why we're not doing a separate bond for sewer and storm. They travel together in our financial system. So I will turn this over to Buzz.
Thanks, Vic.
And you should be able to see it.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Yeah. Sometimes there's too often correlation between the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, but these projects will helpfully, you know, the stormwater project will help keep those flows out of the sanitary sewer. I'm going to go over just a few of the summary slides here with you. These are excerpts from the proposed, the preliminary official statement for the, the proposed $30.4 million sewage works revenue bonds. It's again, it's a combination of the storm and sanitary sewer utilities. We'll go through the sources and uses of fund statement. The, I'll show you the amortization illustration that we've got for a 20-year bond issue. And then the combined debt service is really the key for what dictates our debt, our maximum annual debt service requirement, which also translates into our debt service reserve requirement. And I might just point out right away, the way it's structured, we have that debt reserve fully funded already going into this. So we don't have to bond additional proceeds to fund the debt service reserve, or we don't have to do a five-year buildup. It's already in place. So that's, that's good news. And then the projected revenues for the next three years. We'll look at the anticipated operation and maintenance expenses, the debt service requirements, and then the coverage is really what measures sort of the strength of the bonds. And we've got really strong coverage right now with, with respect to this, this deal. So with that, I'm going to, I may need you to flip through that slide. Thank you. Here's a summary of the project. Again, we're issuing 30.4 million in new money bond issue. And we are expending $8 million of our existing cash on hand. And I believe you're about halfway through that, I think, at this point. Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've spent about half of that eight million already. So the total project we're looking at is 38.4 million. Again, the Dillon Road is the biggest chunk of that project doing the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant there. 25 million, little over 11 million on the Jordan River tunnel project. We'd like to build in a contingency factor. We've got allowance for easements and engineering and issuance costs, including the underwriting fees, which are usually between 1 and 2%. So that's the project cost summary and kind of the, the bond sizing. The actual total project is about 38.4 million and the bond size is 30.4 million. Can we flip to the next one? Oh, yeah, here's the proposed. This is an illustration of the amortization schedule. We always use high interest rates here. We're hoping to get rates, you know, more in the low two range. That's what we're anticipating, but we want to always plan for the worst case scenario. So we have a high interest rate assumption in this illustration, which again, that should make our real coverage numbers even stronger. You can see that the first few years, we are not making principal payments because we're wrapping the debt around some of the other debt that's going to fall off in a few years. And then we'll accelerate those payments so that we keep a relatively level total debt service throughout the life of most of these bond issues. And on the next schedule, you'll see how that all fits in with the existing debt. There we go. If you look at the far right-hand column, that our, our bond year total through 2025, that's when some of the old debt starts rolling off, is about 5.1 to 5.2 million dollars in that range. And then it drops to about $4 million. And then when we get way down the pipe, back in the 2037 range, we have more, more debt rolling off and those payments drop down to a million eight. So assuming we had no other projects come up between now and 2041, we'd be out of debt in 2041. But more than likely, there's going to be more projects that come up down the pipe. So that's how, and we do have that 5.2, that 5.2 million is our maximum debt service requirement. You'll see that sort of in the far right column, the second row there. We have that covered in our debt service reserve fund. So we don't need to bond any additional money or buy a surety or do any of those types of things. We've got the funds on hand to fully fund that debt reserve and they're already in that fund. So with that, let's go on to the coverage schedule. This shows the, we took 2019 was our baseline. And we've adjusted the test year revenues for the scheduled increases that, you know, have, are being phased in. I believe you've got a 3% increase that took effect January 1st of this year. And the outside city surcharge is 12%. That took effect in January of this year. And then there's an increase in the stormwater fees that again, these are already approved and I believe they took effect in 2020 or in July of 2020. So those should all already be in place now. We're projecting revenues of a little over $25 million a year. And that's without any additional rate increases in what you've already approved. The cash operating expenses are projected at about 13.5 million. The 2020 budget actually has a little more than that in there, but I think you always tend to budget a little bit stronger than maybe what you need to account for unanticipated events that oftentimes occur. We've added in the metering lease payments and made some inflationary adjustments when we get out to 2022. But the, the net revenues after paying the cash operating expenses are about double what the annual combined debt service will be. So that means our projected coverage ratios are two times the debt service payment. That's a very strong, and that's what it takes though to get, you know, the types of bond ratings that the city is accustomed to. We're hoping to reinforce. We've already sent the preliminary official statement to Standard and Poor's and we have rating meeting we're setting up for the second week of November. And once we get the rating worked out, we'll then put together a timeline for the actual bond sale, which will occur sometime in December or January of, you know, the next couple of months here. We're kind of watching the market through the election cycle. There's oftentimes a flood of deals at the end of the year. So we want to, we want to be ready to go on a moment's notice when the timing is just right to pull the trigger for our bond sale. And again, if we can lock in low rates yet this year, that would be the ideal scenario, but we have flexibility as long as we get our deal done by the end of January, sort of the, the two-month window for the bond sale that we're looking at. So with that, that concludes my comments and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crone, and thank you, Mr. Kelson. Are there questions from council committee members for either Mr. Crone or Mr. Kelson and his team? Indicate by raising your hand, please. Well, seeing none yet, I'll ask a question. Mr. Kelson, we're, we're going to increase capacity at Dillon from 15 to 20 million gallons per day. How long, what, what is that bias in terms of time? It's correlated with increased population, I assume. So you've got probably some projection about how long that capacity will last. Could you tell us how long that might, that might be?
Our estimates based on past rates of growth and, and demand in that catchment is about 15 years or so before we'd be looking at another capacity expansion. So we'd be looking pretty close to the end of the window that Buzz laid out for you a moment ago. We'd be looking at the, you know, the late 2030s probably before we get to there.
I see. And just a follow-up, just generally speaking, so, so we're taking, utilities is taking on more debt in terms of bonding. There's interest to be paid. Ratepayers are responsible for, for that. With the increase in growth in population, do we strive for some manner of concurrency, do we not? In terms of, in other words, you know, present-day ratepayers are not simply subsidizing growth in terms of adding on future capacity. We, we strive to, to deliver those costs to future ratepayers and those that, that, that then add on to the system or join the system. Am I correct in that assumption?
A couple of years ago, the council implemented, we requested and the council approved a, a system development charge to be added to the connection fee whenever anybody connects a new, a new building to our sewer. And the reason for that system development charge is specifically for future capacity expansions at the plant. So as, as new demand is added to the system, we are, we are collecting money that will help to pay for that future capacity expansion. So that's why our connection fee went up to 2,800, is that right? For, for residential? And, you know, we, we, we've collected fairly large connection fees from a number of institutions. I think the connection fee, the total connection fee for the new hospital was around a half a million. So we, we are, we are making sure that as we grow, as the community grows, when we get new connections, that money is, is going to be available for future plant capacity expansions.
Got you. Okay. Thank you for that.
How you were able to get to eight million to buy the bond down. And yeah, your, your comment, Mr. Ral is, is right on point. It's always a chicken and egg thing. You've got to have the capacity to grow, but then you also have to have the revenue stream to, to be able to get to funding. But you've got a good blend, I think, with that system development charge. And as those new customers come on, they'll be paying the same rates everybody else does. The system development charge sort of lets them buy into the equity that everybody else has been paying into. And so over time, I think it's accomplishing what you want.
Yeah, I think you're right. It's a good strategy. Okay, are there other questions? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Of the eight million that we had on hand, and I think you just used a term that that's what we use to buy the bond down. And what does that mean? We're still using some of that eight million to pay some of our other obligations.
Well, the total, the total cost of all the projects and everything associated with them is 38.4 million dollars, but we're only bonding for 30 because we had eight in cash.
Okay. And that's what was explained before, I think. And I think we talked about when we came here, I think our public will want to hear things like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I'm not a math major, but.
And there's a certain amount of history there. We had in 2016, right? Right when I joined utilities department, we were in the process of doing rate reviews for both water and sewer. At that time, we had a capital improvement plan with a number of projects that we were planning to do. But we got just, you know, right after we got the rate increase, we got the letter from I D M. So we had to regroup and really reorient the capital improvement plan towards the whole future capacity expansion and so forth. So basically, we weren't doing those projects right away as we originally planned to. We just saved the money figuring it would go towards this bigger project. And something I didn't say about this project, pardon me, is we're, this project also has some environmental consequences that are positive. We anticipate that the new blowers and the new process controls for our blowers will reduce the amount of electricity we use for aeration by around 15%. That's, you know, based on last year's budget, about, about $60,000 a year. That would be a benefit to us. And obviously, we'd be using less electricity and, and reducing our greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you.
Very good. Further questions from council? Okay, well, seeing none, are there, is there a recommendation for ordinance 2026?
Just point of order. Should we go to the public for comment?
Oh, very good. Thank you. Got ahead of myself. Do we have public, Mr. Lucas? Anyone like to comment on ordinance 2026?
And any members of the public who have not attended a Zoom meeting before, you can indicate that you'd like to comment by going to the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the raise hand option, or by typing a message into the chat to let me know that you'd like to comment. And maybe we'll give folks just a couple of seconds to, to do that.
Thanks for that instruction. Wait a moment.
Not seen anyone indicate that they'd like to speak.
Okay, then we're back to council for comment or recommendation. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, just a comment. I didn't have any questions, but thank you very much, Mr. Kelson and Mr. Crone for presenting tonight. I do think the, the materials we got from you and the process, this has already been vetted by, as well as the presentation tonight, all layout in, in great detail. The strategy we're taking and how, how well-prepared we are for the, the future needs here. So I appreciate all that work and I'm happy to vote to recommend approval of the whole council tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Need to unmute myself. I'll be voting for this ordinance as well. And I've had the pleasure of, of working with the utility staff and Vic for several years now. And there was an anticipation, I, I think is safe to say, of the capacity increase. And then we got the recommendations from I D M. And it's, it's interesting how we move funds or save funds and utilize funds to anticipate future projects. And things like the Jordan River Culver, which we'll be dealing with, hopefully not as long as we have in the past. And I've asked a lot of questions about revenue sources and, and some rate increases and that sort of thing. But with our growth, with some of the projects, and in many cases, we're playing catch-up. In some respects, irrespective of the capacity increase that we're seeking or that we'll gain, we're playing catch-up from years ago on some of our facility or utility infrastructure layouts. I, I think that's safe to say, Vic, I do believe. So that's part and parcel. And I just like our, the public to understand that things are being managed well and with anticipation and being concerned for debt service and anticipated revenue. And I'm happy to work with, with Mr. Crone as well or listen to these reports as we have over the years. So I plan to support this and thank you for the work and we'll keep asking questions. And you just keep providing the services and the details.
Very good. Other cons? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thank you. Thanks. Sorry I missed this presentation. I just wanted to say I had a meeting that ran over. Slash, I lost track of time with that meeting. But I, I want to echo what Councilmember Sims said, that I really appreciate how on top of everything you all are and that, like how comprehensive the details you give us are, like in the packets. And I didn't get to see the presentation, but I really appreciate that. And I love that we're managing for the present and the future and like to keep that in mind the whole time. So thank you. Sounds good to me.
Very good. And I'll add that, Mr. Kelson, you run a tight ship. So I have very high confidence in your staff and department. So with that, do we have a recommendation?
Who of the committee recommend do pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a do-pass recommendation. Mr. Lucas, would you call the roll?
We do have the clerk here, but I, I believe as committee chair, you can just go down the, go down the line as, as you see, folks.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
All these meetings.
So I, I can call the roll. In other words.
It's a committee meeting, yes.
Okay, this is fairly new to me, sharing. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So receives a do-pass recommendation of four to zero. And I beg your pardon, Clerk Bolden. And a little rusty at this.
And I will note for, for this item and the second item, if the committee makes a recommendation on that as well, a report will need to be prepared and signed by the committee members before next week's regular session. So just keep your eyes out for that.
Very good. And thank you for joining us, Mr. Crone. So with that, we will now proceed to ordinance 2027. Mr. Kelson, can you tell us about FOG?
I can. For ordinance 2027, I have a very brief presentation. With me for this one, I have James Hall, who's our Assistant Director for Environmental Programs, and Jason Winning, who is our Industrial Pretreatment Coordinator. They have been the architects of this and have been working very hard with Chris Wheeler of City Legal to develop amendments to Title 10. There we go. Fat soils and grease, that's what FOG stands for. They can cause big trouble in sanitary sewers and sanitary sewer infrastructure. This picture is not a picture of Bloomington sewers. We don't have brick ones like this. But the, what happens is that the grease can accumulate and become solidified in, in pipes. And you may have seen some stories from cities in Europe and on the East Coast where they've had, they call them fat birds. It's a gigantic blob of fat that plugs the sewer and costs a lot of money to dig that stuff out. When fog clugs, when fog causes sewer to be clogged up, we have to get out there with with the equipment and clean out the sewers and especially downtown, that has been an issue, especially in the past. It's better now than it used to be, but it's still a problem. We still do get clogged sewers. When you get a clogged sewer, it can lead to sanitary sewer overflows and, and other kinds of problems. So we really don't want fog in the system. When fog gets to the plant, it can- When fog gets to the plant, it can make nice little balls of floating floating grease that float inside the clarifiers, which masses things up at the plant, and it just becomes a management issue. So sanitary sewer systems like CBUs are often given the authority to regulate the discharges of fat soils and grease from food service establishments and other and other industrial customers. And basically, the idea is you, we require them to install equipment that retains the grease and allows it to be removed from the system before it goes in the sewer. In order to improve our fog program, the first thing we started talking about was grease retention devices. We have had this requirement for a long time. They, we have used concrete grease interceptors. They're costly. They're also big and you have to dig a big hole. And in Bloomington, when you dig a big hole, you often hit bedrock, which is extremely expensive. This has been an ongoing challenge for us and for our regulated community because it turns out to be pretty expensive to put one of these things in. So if you got a bar or a restaurant and you need to have a grease interceptor, you could be facing a really significant cost. So as we've been responding to those kinds of concerns for a number of years, we had a new customer who proposed that we try a new technology that they had used in other communities successfully. They offered to allow us to treat it as a grease trap and have them clean it once a month if it didn't work. So we tried it for a year and we did a comprehensive study of grease interceptor performance across the city and compared it to the performance of the, these interceptors that were being tried out. And they worked very well. They're smaller, they're lighter, they're, they're plastic and a couple of people can manhandle them into place. They require smaller holes and and you're looking at one here. So and the other thing is that this, this polymer material that they're made from will last longer in the ground because it doesn't get corroded. The sewage would does corrode those concrete interceptors. And so these, we expect that will last longer. Altogether, installation will save about three to five thousand dollars for for the regulated customers who who need to install. The other thing we want to do to improve the the fog program is establish a preferred pumper program. The code, our code requires that grease interceptors be cleaned and inspected every ninety days. Smaller devices are usually kept indoors are called grease traps. They have to be cleaned and inspected monthly. And what what happens is our customers hire a contractor that pumps out the grease and then they dispose of it at the Dilman plant. Our experience has shown that results can be inconsistent. They don't always clean the interceptors the same way. Sometimes they want to put the water that came out when they pumped out the grease back in the interceptor, which also puts some grease back in there. There's just a number of issues that we want to be more consistent. We want all the pumpers to do it the same way. And we, which, which means that we'll get better compliance for for our customers and our food service establishment customers will, will be able to rely on getting the same service from, from all the, from all the pumpers. What the program will require is training at no cost for any waste haulers who want to service food service establishments in Bloomington. And it will also improve our data reporting system. So at this point, we're happy to take any questions. I'd like to have James and Jason be on the line to help with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Questions from council? Can't see all of you. No, we can't. So no questions. I have a question. Mr. Kelson, you said that the savings would be thousand dollars per restaurant or per customer? Did you get my question?
Yeah, three to five thousand dollars would be the savings. I think you, your voice dropped out there from home. That's based on, you know, right now it's in the twenty to
Connections unstable. Try again. How much? Twenty to twenty five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, that's a, it's still a good number.
Other questions from?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, other questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Flaherty has question.
Thanks. Kind of two questions, and they may be silly questions. It's, I don't have a good enough sense of of all the details, I think, to to really know, but it was mentioned, you know, trying to increase slips through the cracks. Everybody's complying. Is that a safe assumption? Or yeah, what does that look like?
Yeah. No, we have people that are in noncompliance specifically typically right now because of COVID. But in general, we're able to catch those. We have a system that kind of monitors those. And sometimes they're out of compliance because they haven't submitted the paperwork that the hauler generates for them, not that they haven't actually haven't had this service completed. We just don't know about it because they haven't submitted the paperwork, and that's part of what the preferred pumper program will do, is kind of help them with that portion of it.
Okay, so we may see increased compliance or at least time to compliance for some as well, not just lowered costs.
Actually, there's one other part of compliance, and that is when the, when the ordinance was first, when the, the fog program was first established, the city, the way it's written in the code is there are certain triggering actions the business might take that would require the installation of an interceptor. So if you owned a restaurant ten or fifteen years ago and you didn't have a grease interceptor, but you decided to replumb the building, that's, that, that was a triggering event that required installation of an interceptor, and we catch those during the plan review process.
That leads me to another question, actually, then, which is kind of maybe how many food service industry entities are predate that that fog program and aren't collecting fog at this point? Is that much of a problem?
Well, they were all required to install some type of grease retention device. And now they had until, and we've, we have actually found some, since I've been here since two thousand eighteen, where they hadn't, and we've given, put them on a compliance schedule to install that. But, but yes.
Okay, I think I misunderstood a little bit. Then finally, is this easy to quantify in a sort of percent improvement kind of idea? Like, I'm wondering how much, how much of an impact this will make, either economic or just efficiency wise on on your end in the actual wastewater treatment stage?
Well, over time, it has reduced, the fog program has reduced the number of times we've had to clean grease out of, out of sewer mains. This is especially historically been a big problem downtown where all the restaurants, you know, there's a large concentration of restaurants and on, and also a lot of older sewer infrastructure there as well. So we don't clean, we still clean them, but we don't clean them as often as we used to. Jason, do you remember, I forgot the number of, we do keep track of how many gallons of grease get get hauled to the plant. Do you remember what the number was last year?
It fluctuates. It is roughly almost thirty thousand. I think we do it by pounds or maybe it's gallons a month that we kind of will see down there in a heavy month. And that's, that, we're tracking that by what the haulers bring to us. That doesn't include what some haulers may take out of, out of the city limits and dispose it elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
The questions from council? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Along with what Councilmember Flaherty was was getting to, I think, a little bit, can you share with us the record keeping on how utilities knows the compliance of all our business owners? How do we know? And I think you have an answer for that. And my other quick comment is that this may not add anything or especially save anything with utilities. It does, it surely doesn't increase costs, but the savings, the big savings is to our business community, which helps them and helps local commerce on down the line. I know that was kind of long. I'm sorry, but if you could just touch on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we, we use a software called Linco that we have all the food services established entered into to a database, and we can put reminders up on when they should be submitting their reports or when they should be have this service to clean out their grease retention device. And so it kind of will flag us if we haven't got a report from them. And so and this is part of the preferred pumper program. We have close to six hundred food service establishments. We have roughly fifteen to twenty pumpers or haulers in with that working within the city. So it will help us in a time resource manner with keeping track of just the fifteen to twenty instead of the six hundred. But we do have a software that we use it to track the food service industries right now.
And I'd also like to comment on the benefits to the regulated community, to the restaurants and so forth. This is a topic that has been, we've discussed quite a lot with the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Alex Prowl has been a real advocate for trying to find alternative ways to to deal with grease and we're in, has been helpful to us in working with with the regulated community to help them understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, why they have to have one and so forth. So it's been, he's, he's put in some effort on this topic as well.
Councilmember Sims, you had more?
If I may continue. One last question, Vic. Can you talk about what triggers the need for a grease interceptor in our business? Because I know we have some businesses that maybe were they baking it up and for an example, but what triggers the need for a grease interceptor in our rate paying community?
Well, there's a number of events. I can ask Jason or James to to go into detail on that.
The biggest thing is if if you are classified as a food service establishment by the Health Department, the Monroe County, and so that's kind of our first big trigger. And then some of those kind of home bacon services or food services that you talk about, we look at it at a case by case basis. But the first trigger is if you're considered a food service by the Health Department.
And then if if you change your plumbing, so for example, you have a restaurant, you change the plumbing, that will trigger it. We, new buildings that are going to have food service establishments in them or might have food service establishments in them, they, they put them in. Several of the larger buildings that have been residential above commercial have put in food grease interceptors at the time they built the building because it's a lot cheaper to do it then than it is to dig, dig everything up after the building's already there. We also do have some restaurants that can't have a grease interceptor simply because of the geography. There's just no place to put it. That's happened in a number of locations. Usually their owners wish they could have them because grease traps are a pain in the neck and have to be cleaned more often.
And this is where I'll jump in and say that this new technology, being a smaller unit, it allows a lot of these food service establishments an added flexibility as far as installations. For instance, a lot of the downtown area, we are able to do basement installs, installs below grade, something you can't do with the older technologies that we were using. So it allows a lot more flexibility there. And that's something that we've seen a lot of positive feedback on.
Chris had something to, I think.
Mr. Wheeler, yes?
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Rallo. Chris Wheeler with City Legal. One of the other things with regards to Mr. Sims, when you're saying, you know, what triggers need for these grease retention devices? The food service establishment definition can also extend to resident, I'm sorry, to dormitories, nursing home facilities, fraternities, sororities, schools, hospitals, prisons, other facilities like that where there would be food services being rendered. That can also trigger the need for grease retention, grease interceptors, grease devices.
Thank you for that. Other questions from council? Just curious. Mr. Kelson, what, what do we do with thirty thousand pounds of grease per month? Is it emulsified and digested or landfilled? What, what, what happens to that?
Well, right now it goes to Dilman. We have a lagoon that it gets poured into and it basically oxidizes in the sun out there. That's basically what we have right now. When we talk about things like waste energy projects, if if we one day do have some sort of anaerobic digestion or composting capability, we would certainly take, take the grease. Grease is the, you know, is the, is the holy grail for the anaerobic digester business. So if you've got, if you've got a digester and you want to get all the grease you can get because it's, it's got the highest potential for making nothing.
Yeah, a lot of energy there. Okay, if there are no more questions from council, we'll go to the public for comments on ordinance twenty twenty seven. Use the raised hand function, if you would. And our council attorney will enable you to speak. Anyone want to comment on FOG? Nothing? Okay, then we're back to council for final comments or and recommendation. We have one? Anyone care to make a comment? Okay, Councilmember Flaherty has comment.
Sure, very brief. Just a thank you again to the folks who presented tonight and for the details we've gotten in our packet and in presentations. So thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
I'll be brief as well. We'll support this. And again, this is one of the, not the few, but one of the good win-win situations that us as counselors deal with. We win because the food service proprietor has a, it's, it's less cost effective or more cost effective and less costly for them. And with our pumper people in the fog program, that ensures that the next win is that the majority of that stuff and and with our regulation checks stays out of our sewer lines and our infrastructure. So I think it's good all the way around. These are one of the more positive projects or initiatives that I've seen. I think this is very, very positive and I will support it. So thank you all.
Thank you. Further comment? Just that my thanks to Mr. Kelson and your team for experimenting with new technology. That seems to, as Mr. Sims says, lower costs a bit and provide more flexibility as well. Do we have a recommendation?
Move do pass recommendation?
Second.
We have a do pass recommendation. And a second, I'll begin. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We have a do pass recommendation of four to zero from this committee for ordinance twenty twenty seven. I believe that concludes our business. Does it, Mr. Lucas?
Thank you so much.
It does, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Thank you, Mr. Winning. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And so we will adjourn this meeting and the next meeting coming up is the Transportation Committee. And so we will adjourn this meeting and the next meeting coming up is the Transportation Committee.